Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session for Monday, September 13th. Scott, I think we probably ought to jump right into it. Let's learn about the south of Grayslake master plan.
Morning, Mayor, council members. So this is a follow-up, you may recall, from our last discussion about southwest infrastructure generally. And we talked about how this portion was going to be left to a future discussion. So here we are, opportunity to talk about just to south of Grayslake. And I'm going to hand it over first to Ryan.
Good morning, Mayor, members. Councilman Michael, the city's office of economic planning. And the workplace this morning bringing you the master plan study for the area of the south of Grayslake Park along Thomas Beck Road. We really hope this is...
It's a place to see a lot of redevelopment interest in the future. And over the past year, city staff has met with a host of community stakeholders, as well as our consultant team, to really bring forward, to work in tandem with the community and bring forward a kind of guided framework and vision for how we see this area redeveloping in the future, which is what this plan will discuss today. We've already seen an uptick in land speculation and development interest within this area currently. And we just felt that it was an opportune time to go and engage the neighbors, the property owners in the area, neighborhood associations, as well as development interests, to really chart what the land use patterns are going to look like in this area and really envision how this area transitions from the lower industrial, lower intensity industrial area that it is today to what we hope is a vibrant mixed-use district in the future. I think the other thing you'll find with this presentation today is that when we talk about development, we've really got to be respectful in how this interacts and engages with Grayslake Park to the north and even McRae Park to the east. So there is quite a bit of time and attention spent to that effort here today as well. As Scott pointed out, this is a subcomponent of the southwest infrastructure study. So our intent really is that the adoption of this master plan would go on a parallel track with the adoption of the southwest infrastructure study, which we envision happening later this fall. That'll be back before council again. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and introduce our consultant team with Confluence. We've got Chris Shires and Abby Hebert here today. And I will go ahead and turn the floor over to them. I know we've got several city staff from different departments in the room today if there's any questions that the consultant team wants to defer to staff. So, thank you.
Right. Mayor and council, I'm Chris Shires with Confluence here in our Des Moines office. Also have behind me Abby Hebert, also from our Des Moines office. Very excited to be in front of you this morning to give you an overview of our project. And so for the presentation today, I just want to walk through a little bit about our scope, what we're proposed to do, and then that schedule and the public input and stakeholder input we did receive. We want to walk through that public input kind of at a high level, so you know what we heard. And then I want to go through in greater detail the master plan, this visionary plan that we have developed for you. So a little bit on that project schedule, like Ryan talked about and like Scott talked about, the south of Grayslake master plan is a subset, a sub-study underneath that greater southwest infrastructure plan. So that southwest infrastructure planning study obviously incorporated a much larger area, a lot of land west of the airport, north up to Waterworks Park, and then over into our area where we're focused, south of Grayslake Park, on both sides of Thomas Beck, all the way over to southwest Seventh Street. As we, as your consultant team, really got excited about the potential for this area and of course, the vision that was communicated to us from stakeholders, area property owners, as well as your staff and some of your participating elected officials. So we've been doing this for many months now, but we're really in the tail stretch here, the end of final phase presenting in front of you. And so we've had five meetings with our steering committee. It was great for us to get that immediate feedback on our ideas and what we've been hearing. We did a series of stakeholder interviews back in February. We had a public workshop that we did virtually in March. We set up an interactive website that was on during the entire process. And then we had a joint planning commission and urban design review board meeting back in July to get their ideas and feedback and present this to them. And then one of my more enjoyable public open houses in July was in person, where we were able to meet one-on-one with members of the public interested communities in the community, interested parties in the community. And so with that, I'm going to turn over the next section to Abby for her to prevent, present what we heard.
Hello, Mayor and council. I'm Abby Hebert. So as Chris said, we met at the end of July at the Fred Maytag Scout Center from 3:30 to 7:00, where we had approximately 90 to 100 attendants. They really ranged in age from elementary-age students to older population in Des Moines. So here we had a variety of boards presented to them that demonstrated the existing conditions of the Grayslake, or south of Grayslake, precedent imagery for things that we had drawn on through our discussions with stakeholders and through the website. And then the three different scenarios for them to kind of provide comment on and give us some insight on what they were thinking. There were post-it notes available to them to kind of drop comments there and really just point out different features that they were really a fan of and things that they were like, "We like this, but we'd like to tweak it in this way." So some of the comments that we received from that were, "They would like to keep Confluence Brewery." Many of them favored the boardwalk and double woo-nurf that we had featured in the scenarios of scenario two and scenario three, preferred the mixed-use option over more purely dedicated residential buildings, and would also like to explore an option for grocery in the neighborhood. They would, the community felt that people would pay a lot of money to live here and would never have to leave with the amenities that we provided through the different scenarios, and that there would be, oh, they would like to see more bus stops and connections to the downtown and airport. Many supported and encouraged the pedestrian and walkable focus throughout the study area and felt that that had a really good complementary factor to Grayslake. So in addition to the boards that we presented, the, each attendant received a handout that had opportunities for them to rank the potential site features, from one being the least desirable and 10 being the highest desirable, provide feedback on the three scenarios, and then general comments for us to rank this overall scenarios. So through the potential site features and their rankings, we went through and tallied how everybody felt about them. And so the top three highest site features that we received, three being the boardwalk that would run along the southern border of Grayslake and the northern border of the south of Grayslake development, the pedestrian-focused streets, and then the trail connections. In the potential site features, again, we had them go through and provide general comments on each of the scenarios and in the end rank which scenario they most preferred, and that being the number one of the urban green neighborhood with the highest average ranking. So general comments from the comment card feedback, again, they would really like to see walkability and pedestrian focus. They would really like to see the retention of the Confluence Brewery building, less density and not as tall buildings, not to disrupt the views into Grayslake, a lot more green space, again, just to really have a complementary factor to the additional, the existing conditions of Grayslake, less of a car focus, so again, more focus on that walkability and pedestrian opportunity, and then more mixed-use and commercial community space with the double woo-nurf and the boardwalk. So as Chris mentioned throughout the entire process, we did have this interactive website through social pinpoint where residents who weren't as comfortable coming to the public meetings could go on virtually, still provide the same kind of feedback, and let us know what they were feeling. So here we had 10 general comments through the second phase. So this, this portion of the feedback is from the public open house and on. Before that, we had different presentations providing the data. So this one is, since then, we had had 10 general comments, and then 17 comments for scenario one, nine for scenario two, and again, 17 for scenario three. A lot of the general themes that we saw from the public open house and the general comment cards was reiterated here. A lot of the comments really would like to see a diverse housing typology. They didn't really feel that single-family housing or high-density apartments would be best suitable here, so more of like townhomes and row homes and lower-density mid-rise apartments. Again, they would really like to see Confluence Brewing be there, but not so much of the other older buildings, so that being the Wesco site, the 1902 Bell Avenue building, and then some of the other ones on south of Thomas Beck. They would also really like to see connections from Lincoln High School and McRae Park into this area, so as to create a broader connection from the southeast into Grayslake and into this development. A lot of focus was on the environmental and sustainability factors of how this development would go about. And so in one of the proposals, as you'll see in the next master plan, there was a lot of focus on how we can support Grayslake and how we can also supplement that with the development occurring and really connecting the neighborhoods from the south into Grayslake and making that more of like an environmental factor instead of an environmental burden. The double woo-nurf and boardwalk you'll see featured in the master plans, but they, that was a very talked about and highly commented factor of each of the scenarios. And then in addition to that, they would really like to have opportunities for gathering spaces and social events that they could program into different opportunities. And then concepts from the public workshop and interactive combined, again, the double woo-nurf was heavily preferred, with a lot of this liking, well, a lot of the comments would like to link the neighborhood back into the natural environment with recreational amenities. They would prefer pedestrian-oriented development. They would like to see increased connections crossing the river for pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as the retention of Confluence Brewery. They would like to see the preservation of open gathering and play spaces with medium density and intensity as the most desirable land uses. And with that, I will hand it back over to Chris for the master plan.
All right. Abby, thank you. So before I get into the master plan, a couple of things to communicate. Of course, it is just a master plan. It's a concept. And we do these to, as you guys well know, to get folks excited about the future, the what-ifs, what could happen, the potential for this area. There's more than one right way, and there's more options, and whatever gets built probably looks just a little bit different. The other thing we did communicate with the stakeholders, specifically property owners and business owners, is that whatever we're doing in here, we see as a partnership, that this is something that the landowners and the developers are working in partnership with the city to make this vision happen. And so as I walk through it here, definitely feel free to jump in with any questions. But on this map, north is up, you see Grayslake on the north end. I can't quite trace, can I? But there's that dashed yellow and black line to kind of show the wetland park property. South of that dashed black and yellow line is the south of Grayslake master plan area, which is private property. And so we're staying off the park site. Now what that, north of that line is showing is that wetland enhancement project that I believe you've, you've seen before and had a little bit of discussion on, some of that improvement we can do to Grayslake. And so all the activity, of course, is not within Grayslake Park itself or that wetland area, it's on the private property, which we actually do see as a potential, as a benefit to try to help maybe take a little bit of that pressure off the lake. It's, the park, I should say, its activity, that we're trying to pull some of that public gathering space internally. And so Bell and Thomas Beck is to the south, floor is, is on the left-hand side of the screen. So I'll start left and run my, run to the east, to the right. So a couple of things we show preserving that Iowa Finance Authority office building, leaving that alone, integrating it in the site. To its north, though, showing that potential, and I'm going to zoom in now, showing that potential for multi-story apartment. And we really see that all the multifamily in this area could hit a variety of price points, everything from workforce housing to very high-end owner-occupied condos, that we really have the opportunity to do a wide mix, a variety of housing, to meet those housing needs we know we have going forward as a metro. So we're very excited about that potential. Plus, as we send more population into this specific area, it'll help feed and drive all that fun retail and mixed use we'd like to see. So in brown is generally apartment. And so even as you see to the east, I'm sorry, well, to the, to the east, to the right of the Iowa Finance Authority building, have a few more multi-story apartment buildings. The other thing we're trying to accomplish is some view corridors through this site back to the lake. And I'll have some 3D perspective drawings here at the end of the presentation as well. We have that pond feature, oh, please.
I was going to ask, is all the parking for that area, it looks like a lot of surface parking there.
So what we're trying to accomplish is, we're parking this both with underbuilding, first-floor building parking, as well as surface parking. And then in those mixed-use areas, kind of in the center of the plan, that's surrounded by those purple buildings, that's the potential, those could be multi-story parking ramps. It really depends ultimately on the density, the ultimate number of stories. So as we add more stories, which we're trying to push this and show this as, as four, three and four-story mixed-use buildings, we'll need more parking. As we might have somebody propose something with a little less density, we'd need less. And so really trying to balance having adequate parking to make that residential work versus not having so much parking that the site seems unwieldy or, or too, too dense or too overpaid with parking, that we're wanting to support a little bit of both. And you do see quite a bit of green space on this in reaction to a lot of the comments we received from the public.
What about the existing buildings, not just on the corner, but there is some existing buildings? Are we talking about purchasing them or having tried to develop and purchase them? Or what's, what's the plan with that?
Yeah. So great question. Obviously, there's the Wesco industrial building, the large Bell Avenue mixed, multi-industrial building, the other ones on the south side of Thomas Beck farther to the east. Those are all in operation today, all under private ownership. So what we see is this is a many, multi-year, multi-phase plan that over time, as a property owner is interested in redeveloping, that they're going to work in partnership with the city. So at least from your consultant team's perspective, we're not proposing that you, you go out there today and start to do anything that this is starting, this is sending a message to the property owners and the development community that, hey, we see a greater vision for this than maybe its current industrial layout, that long-term, something higher and better might be this type of mixed-use type development. And so really looking at this as a partnership, unless there is a specific project that the city might want to take on and then partner with that property owner to make something happen sooner rather than later.
Do we have any private developers that are interested in following through on this plan, or?
So you've had development pressure on the south side of Thomas Beck. In fact, there's the little brown circled area, we say proposed rowhouse development.
Yeah, I knew about that.
And then farther to the, I guess I don't have it shown on this map, but farther to the east on southwest Seventh and Ninth, you do have that rowhouse development. You do have a development interest that has purchased, owns that large Bell Avenue industrial building, the old Massey Ferguson building in the middle, where we generally have that mixed use. So we would imagine over time, as that becomes time for them to have that on their radar screen to develop, that they'll be into the city to say, "Hey, we're excited to do something." That property owner has done some advanced planning on it privately, and so we think it's just a matter of time before somebody is ready to pull the trigger out here. But definitely something multi-step over time. We do also show the preservation of the Pomerance industrial building, that maybe that could be repurposed into something over time. It's kind of a narrow funky-shaped property, hard to rebuild on its own, but maybe, you know, it can stay in place. And, you know, the, the current tenant Confluence Brewery in at least the east half of the building can continue to operate. Other tenants might switch. It might be one of these kind of live-work loft artist-in-resident type of buildings. Lots of opportunities there.
So what economic tools are in place here? Because this isn't part of the Spider-Man tax amendment. Is there, is, are we composing a group and revitalization for this area?
Yeah, at the time, this isn't within an urban renewal area, and you're correct. It's not an area that we currently incentivize multifamily development. I think that if we got some projects that would come forward, we would maybe look to reevaluate that if they, if the developers did basically tell us that there was a gap that the city could play, help play a role in to make sure the project went forward. But right now, there are no tools in place. This is just the vision for how we see this area redeveloping in the future.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Well, with that, I'll just kind of continue on explaining what's going on. We're also proposing that we're managing all of this site's stormwater, both detention and quality onsite. And so we have a couple of more regionalized water features. One, just in the area we were talking about, another one a little bit farther in the center of the property, and then one on the south side of Thomas Beck. Obviously, those can change and adjust and probably will be with specific development plans, but all in an effort to detain, treat the stormwater before it continues into Grayslake as well as the river. To serve as a bit of a transition, I'm going to jump out to closer to Thomas Beck, where we have in yellow, a rowhouse townhome-type development concept. And then you see that we have a large green space. Well, there's that pretty steep hill, if you've been out there, and there's some heirlooms, there's some large oak trees out. Thought that that might be a good area that could be preserved. We might still be, with the right development plan, able to tuck a few more townhomes or rowhouses in there. But thought that might serve as a good transition then to all the residential we have to the south, as well as really serve as a nice green entryway, you know, into this then more dense center core. And so all those buildings in purple, think mixed use, they could be standalone retail, standalone office, standalone residential, or kind of in the traditional mixed-use sense, first-floor retail, upper floors, office, and residential of varying heights. Again, that potential for the center of those, so we're kind of trying to hide the parking, still providing the parking we need, but hiding it, downplaying it. Those could be multi-story parking ramps. One of the big things, and it's that heavy brown line that goes behind the buildings between the mixed-use buildings and the park to the north, is a boardwalk feature. This is a way to activate the space along the park's edge, along this new wetland feature, that new improvement, to really play off those spaces, outdoor seating, outdoor dining. And I'll have some photos here in a moment to kind of show what that can look like. The general community got very excited about that. We don't have a lot of areas in this metro, if you think about it, where you have a heavily actively-used pedestrian bike trail that has retail on it, that has activity spots along it. They're very rare. And so this is one where we can create a much more heavily utilized kind of rec space playing off the park, but taking the traffic off the park, so we're not putting it back into the park. And then as we go to farther to the east, we have the Pomerance industrial building, kind of leaving it in preserved space. We have that new potential townhome development to its south that we didn't try to redesign the developers' layout, we'll leave it to them. But then continuing on that same line in yellow, more rowhouses, townhomes, and then taking advantage of that topography as we're south of Thomas Beck, going up the hill towards the neighborhood, where we can tuck some multi-story apartment buildings into that area, some condos into that area, and kind of downplaying their height, but then leaving large areas of green space. So as you go up that hill, that those might be areas that can serve as a transition and a buffer and a screen. So a little bit on that imagery, so you heard Abby and I talk about a woo-nurf, and even use the funny word, the double woo-nurf. Well, woo-nurf is a German word for a street that's designed to be pedestrian-oriented more than it's car-oriented, but cars can still travel on it. And so think of a double woo-nurf as maybe like a boulevarded one, where we've got, it's a much larger, wider space with a heavy landscape down the middle, like a landscape boulevard, but still, cars can travel. There's still room for cars to park, as we know that's important to make a mixed-use area successful, but it's still more pedestrian-oriented. We make it just a little uncomfortable for the cars. And so here's some examples of that with that outdoor seating and activity space that we just kept universally hearing over and over being so important. So here is some examples of the mixed use and what that can look like. So a combination of multi-story and in this case, single-story without outdoor seating areas, where we can have some of the multifamily in different forms, rowhouse, townhome, as well as multi-story apartment building with green space. And then as we were proposing on the farther west side, some much higher density, but heavily programmed outdoor space along with the multifamily. And so that image on the lower right-hand side is that idea of this activated boardwalk space that might be great, slightly elevated boardwalk to go right up to the wetland areas, still staying on the private property, but playing off the natural beauty in the area, yet still having that activity points, points of interest, outdoor rec, outdoor play space. So with that, I can jump into some 3D perspectives, but also happy to continue to talk about different elements of the plan. So this is from the southwest, looking obviously towards downtown. And I know this at a very high elevation, but we'll have some, some dropdowns. Again, all those colors mean something. So the brown, think apartments, condos. Yellow, think rowhouse, townhome. Purple, think mixed-use buildings. And then those two whitish buildings are the preserved Iowa Finance Authority building, and then the other one's the, the Pomerance building. Little bit of a zoom in. Then as we spin around, this is looking due north off of where Bell transitions to Thomas Beck, showing some of those view corridors, where we can look between the buildings, through the water, through that, that middle in the screen is where we talk about having that woo-nurf-style street. I know the, the trees are very big, but where you can kind of look and see back towards the lake. That roundabout that was discussed on Thomas Beck, another one of those view corridors through the buildings back to the park. Another overall perspective. Sometimes when you're doing these, you don't know when to stop. Once you build the model, you can take the shots from any angle. Little bit of a zoom down to show, you know, that potential. What if those buildings were 10-story and offset with another four-story building? And that mixed-use area? This is a perspective on the far east end, south, looking on the south side from up on the hill, from the south side of Thomas Beck, that little hamlet of mix of townhomes, rowhouses, multifamily right across from the Pomerance building. Here's kind of a perspective looking south and towards the east, as if you're maybe over Waterworks Park. So you can kind of see the distance and separation we do have, the buffer from the park itself. We do know that was very important. Just another angle there. So just a little bit closer to, less than a thousand-foot view, looking northeast back to downtown. Here, we're getting a little closer. We're standing at about that Bell Avenue transition to Thomas. If you're up on a really tall ladder, what it might look like, kind of looking down one of the main entrances to the north and to the park, the, the water bodies in the north. And then that's that hill area we're thinking to preserve. Those are not spotted exactly where those big oaks are, but you know, there's those clusters, groupings of oak trees just south of the Bell Avenue. clusters, groupings of oak trees just south of the Bell Avenue building up against Bell. Another view corridor, looking to the pedestrian entryway, kind of between the townhomes off of Thomas Beck, looking north to the park. Just showing what those open spaces might be, these program spaces. One more shot looking east on the south side of Thomas Beck. And that was it. So I'll go back to the overall master plan. Okay, with that, is there anything else I can review with you on the site plan or any questions you would like me to, to answer?
Any questions? Carl.
Remind me what programmed outdoor spaces?
Thank you for that, yes. And so think of more than just a, a green spot, just more than an open space with sod. So we, it's everything from as little as some tables and chairs, outdoor dining, outdoor seating, to where it could be a, a spot for a performance, like a small stage, to an area that has pickleball courts or bocce ball, or you play bags. I guess I was just at the tailgate, so I'm thinking about Iowa State's loss. But, so the tailgating, it was harsh. But any, any spot where we can do things. And then you even think of something as programmed as, say, a Smash Park with its outdoor play spaces, outdoor rec spaces.
I have a question. I, I, I like the plan, don't get me wrong, but I'm kind of curious, when I hear consultants say, you know, it's this high-end housing, I'm not sure that we need any more high-end housing in our downtown area. I think we've pretty much got that covered and have a pretty high vacancy rate right now. I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to why we don't, we're not focusing on that spider web map that the city council put in place back in 2015 or 2016. We know we need affordable housing. Why aren't we doing, why aren't we spending our time working to redevelop some of those areas, like 6th Avenue? I mean, Birdland is right there on the trail. You know, I heard the consultants say, well, you know, maybe the city would be interested. We don't buy personal, private property. We'll help with gap, but somebody has to come forward and want to do this. It just seems like we already have a lot of areas that really are ripe for development that I don't see us doing much with.
So here's why I think we chose the plan for this area at this time. You brought up the private market, and that's something that we're seeing already. I mean, I think the elephant in the room is the 47-acre property on the north side of Thomas Beck, where we do have a development entity that's engaged right now in master planning that. So we're doing this because we know what's coming. The private market's telling us that. We also felt that it was just opportune while we were doing this larger southwest infrastructure study. This made a good time to go ahead and hit this too, because one of the things we learned with the market district, and this is going back several years ago, we kind of got caught flat-footed when some of the first developments came out of the ground. We really weren't prepared. We had sewer capacity issues. We didn't know what we were going to do with the roads yet. And so this is our effort to come in, when developers do approach the city, we can point to the study and say, here's the framework and the elements of the plan that we would like you to try to follow.
Okay. That's a better understanding. Thank you.
And then I think on the affordable housing front, I mean, a practice that our department's done over the past several years is to ensure that anything that's being TIF incentivized has an affordable housing component to it. So we would strive to make sure that that would happen here in the future as well.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, if I could add just a quick comment to this question. That, as far as the high end, this is going to be a very desirable location across all price points. So I would, I would say that there's very high likelihood there's going to be an awful lot of excitement for opportunity on the high end as well.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that, that affordable housing is in there.
We will.
I think people that live in affordable housing need to have nice areas, too.
Very much hear you loud and clear, and I think in our final report, we'll make sure that that's also very loud and clear. As your consultant team, we definitely see that, that mix of housing at all levels, and then with this amount of density that we're proposing, that opportunity for some truly affordable housing does exist.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody?
All right. Thank you very much.
Close session. No close session.
All right. I want to thank everybody for attending this morning and glad to get the update on the planning south of Grayslake there and all the possibilities. And I think we all realize that the developers are probably end up bringing us the plan that they're most comfortable with putting up, but this gives us a sense of what could happen down there. And with that, I don't believe that we have a closed session, so we'll see everybody back here probably about 4:45. We've got a couple of resolutions, and we'll move forward. Until then, see you all. This meeting's adjourned.